Good evening. We call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council today, Tuesday, September 28th, 2021. Please join us for a moment of silence. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... the liberty and justice of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all for showing up this evening. We've got a few things to discuss this evening. For the first part of our agenda, our Mayor's Minute and Council Comments. I just wanted to say we had a big September. Obviously, we had Labor Day, we had Rhythm and Roots, we had the Bristol Race. So, we had a lot of stuff going on in Bristol. It's an exciting time. And any other comments from council members?
Well, I just want to say it's good to be back. I got this little thing called COVID. Trust me, you don't want it. But it's good to see everybody again. It's good to see a good crowd here. And just want to remind everybody, try to be safe. Mine came from a family member, so that's a little kind of hard to do. But anyway, it's good to be back.
That's what I was going to say, was welcome back. We missed you and we're glad you're here. And I didn't have anybody to argue with while you were gone, so I'm glad to see you again.
I gotta put a little bit of meat back on my bones. I lost quite a bit. I mean, it was a rough ride, but I'm getting better.
Yeah, I'll add to that. Welcome back, Kevin. We missed you being here. I just wanted to share with everyone, Virginia tourism released today that Bristol led the entire state over the weekend in hotel occupancy, average daily rate, and RevPAR. This is really great, showing that it's been up from previous weeks and months, and then in comparison to the data from previous years. For Friday and Saturday night of the weekend, the Bristol rooms were 91% full, meaning that nine out of 10 hotel rooms were occupied. And just to put this kind of in reference, over the past few weeks, the range has been between $60 and $80 a night, and for the last weekend, it was averaging $198 RevPAR figure. So, and this includes the Labor Day weekend. So, I just wanted to stress, this is showing how important the race and the Bristol Rhythm and Roots and other events are to the local tourism economy. And if I can add to, to really put it in perspective, we beat, when I say we're first in the entire Commonwealth, this was beating Virginia Beach, which is really huge, and second was Charlottesville. So, being ahead, being number one over, you know, those key attractions is really huge for considering the amount of people that are in the Virginia Beach area versus in our city of Bristol.
Thank you for that update. That's very exciting. I think it means people are traveling and they're traveling to Bristol. City manager comments?
Good evening, council, members of the public. Tonight, normally I just give my city manager comments from my seat, but due to our landfill situation and the fact that it's important to keep everybody updated, I want to give a little bit of more information as to what's going on in our landfill right now. As everyone in here knows, we did start drilling wells the week of September the 7th, and I will get more into that at the moment. But today, they installed what is called the eight-inch flare. It's a bigger flare at the landfill. It is now operational in anticipation of having more gas that is being produced at the landfill, so it can handle quite a bit more gas than our current flare can. So, that was about a two-week project to get that complete, but it is now completed. And we're continuing to work on the wells. I think we installed our, we're eight and a half in, I believe, today. Due to a mechanical issue, the drill could not finish late this afternoon, but it will be back up and going first thing in the morning. So, what wells have we done so far? We have, the first well was drilled on September, I'm sorry, yeah, September the 15th. It went down 91 feet, and it was 134 degrees at the bottom. On the 16th, well number 54 went in, it was 134 degrees, and it went down 91 feet. Well 59 went 72 feet and was 144 degrees at the bottom. Then on the 20th, well 57 went 103 feet, it is 133 degrees. Well 51 is 114 feet, it's 114 degrees when they, at the bottom. Well 52 is 108 feet deep, 146 degrees at the bottom. Well 50 is 92 feet deep, 133 degrees at the bottom. Well 56 is 109 feet, 122 degrees at the bottom. Well 58, 90 feet, 144 degrees at the bottom. And today, they began working on well 55. Drilling stopped at 60 feet. It was 147 degrees at the bottom, and we will complete that tomorrow. This is a well that is closest to the area that has given the engineers some concern, and you can see at 60 feet, that temperature's a little bit more elevated than what the other ones were. So, well 55 will be completed tomorrow. Well 60 will go in on September 30th. Well 61, I think it's a typo there, that should go in on October the 1st. And anticipated completion date is now October the 8th for all the wells to be drilled. There may be another well or two drilled in consultation with SCS and Draper Aiden. We may have to put in a couple of more wells, but we're still working on that at this point. So, I know last Sunday, the Bristol Herald Courier had an editorial in the paper that discussed closing the landfill. Closing the landfill has been a topic of discussion in the community, and it's been a topic of discussion amongst council members and city staff as we progress through correcting the issues at the landfill. So, first, I want to say, everything that I'm getting ready to tell you tonight is based on assumptions. We cannot assume that there is an engineering way to close the landfill early. We cannot assume that there is an environmentally friendly way to close the landfill early. And we cannot assume that DEQ will approve a closure plan that the city would submit. So, what has to happen before we can even consider a closure? So, in order to, before DEQ would even consider a closure of this landfill, these are the things that have to happen. So, we have gas well installation. My timeline has that complete October 15th. You can see from what I just presented, it's going to be complete as of October 8th right now. That's pending no other issues with equipment or weather, which could slow things down. Our odor mitigation pilot program installation, that actually began last night after 5:00 PM, and they are working on getting that system in place. That is the Bayer Scientific equipment that will spray out a mist that neutralizes the compounds that are being emanated from the landfill. Item three is connection of the new gas wells to the landfill gas collection system. That's an extensive project. That is not something that happens overnight. We anticipate that being completed in December of 2021. Number four, inspection and repair of the wet wells. We anticipate this project will begin in the late fall, early winter of 2021. That would include putting in new pumps and a potential repair of the wear wall at the very bottom of the wet well that's 300 feet down and adjacent to the current landfill. There would be liner installation that would need to be installed as well as we continue to move forward. That would begin in July of 2022. We do know, and we've talked about a, what they refer to as the southeast chimney, due to the gas well installation, the gas collection system, we are unsure when we'll be able to close that chimney off because the engineers and DEQ, all the experts have told us, we've got to get the gas wells installed before we start worrying about closing that chimney. We also, as everyone knows, we know that we have benzene in our wastewater that's coming from the landfill. And in order to deal with the benzene, we need to install basically a million gallon wastewater storage tank. That will be anywhere from an 18 to 24-month project. I would anticipate that being complete June of '24. That would also go in conjunction with the airstrippers that take the benzene out of the wastewater and remediate, any other remediation tools that would extract the benzene. So, June of 2024 would be a time that we could actually have a serious discussion about how we move forward with that landfill. However, I also know that the community is, wants a solution sooner than that. And I think everyone here in this room, I know my five council members, I know I want it, I know my solid waste disposal fund staff wants it, we want a solution quicker as well. But how do we get there? So, the next timeline that you're going to see here is assuming the stars and the moon and the earth all align at the same time. It's assuming everything goes absolutely perfectly, and it's assuming engineers can come up with a plan that they are willing to sign off on for a closure of that landfill. And then that's also assuming that DEQ and EPA would both sign off on closing that landfill. So, on October the 12th at 6:00 PM, SCS and Draper Aiden will be presenting their closure issues to council. This is a broad overview of about 10 or 11 items that council and the public needs to consider as we move forward through correcting the issues at the landfill. There will not be a 5:15 meeting on the day of October 12th, but we will have Draper Aiden and SCS here to discuss that. Item two, council and the engineers continue to consider issues to determine the potential for closure. I have that going from October of now through June of 2022. Council, item three, would eventually, you all may agree, to submit a closure plan to the landfill, for the landfill to DEQ in June of 2022. So, in order to do that, the engineers have to draft a closure plan. Based on my conversation with engineers involved, that plan would take at least 12 months, if not longer. And just to be conservative and not give anyone false hope, I would have estimated the closure plan would be complete in December of 2023, and then in January of 2024, that plan would be submitted to DEQ for review. Yesterday, during a phone call with DEQ, they have indicated that a review of that plan would probably take two years. So, it would be January of 2026 before DEQ either approved or denied that closure plan. So, if DEQ would approve the plan, the city would begin the closure process in February of 2026 with a completion date in June of 2027. Once again, I want to reiterate, on the night of October 12th, the engineers are not presenting a closure plan. They are presenting issues associated with closing a landfill at a rock quarry and everything that we would have to take into account as we move forward. So, and I'm going to reiterate again, this is only a potential timeline if council chooses to move forward with closing the landfill as it was not planned to be closed. Everyone here knows it was planned to be closed as we bring the trash up over and above the lip of the landfill. And recently, over the past nine to 10 months, we've had these issues popped up where we need to look at other options on closing that landfill. And this is a potential timeline for council to consider. Any questions?
I have a question about the well installation.
The which one?
The well installation.
Yeah.
So, can you go back to those slides? So, correct me if I'm wrong, so several of those are over 140 degrees?
Right.
When it gets over 140 degrees, that's when we get into the bad territory, correct?
Well, when you get over 131 and a half is when things have to be reported, but you have to remember, this is at the bottom of the well where these temperatures are coming from. The regulations, from my understanding, they require that report to be completed when the well temperature, the well head temperature is over the 131 and a half degrees.
Okay, so not the, not the bottom of the well, but the top of the well?
That's right.
Okay. Back on the, go forward if you don't mind. Now go to the next one. Okay, so for item six, talking about closure plans submitted to DEQ for review, you said that it would also have to be approved with EPA?
That's correct. Based on the conversation I have with DEQ yesterday, we have a Title V permit, which the EPA granted, and that would have to be approved by EPA as well.
So, is this, is this two-year timeframe?
That would include the EPA review as well.
Okay, so, correct me if I'm wrong, all the wells, all the old wells in the landfill that was operational are still up in operation?
You have 12 of the 19 operational.
And as it stands right now, just with, in a short period of time, we have nine new wells up and running.
That's right. Well, they're not running. They are, they have been installed, they have not been connected to the landfill gas collection system yet.
When is that going to take place?
That will take place beginning, where am I? After October 15th, after the gas wells are all installed.
So, you got to get them all installed before you can use any of them?
Basically, yes, sir.
Now, the flare, we just updated it to an eight-inch?
Correct. Yes.
And it's operational now?
It's operational. They ran it this afternoon.
Okay. What is the scheduled timeline to run that flare?
That flare runs when Injinko is not producing gas.
So, it's running right now?
And if Injinko is not producing gas right now, it would be running. That's correct. I'm sorry, if Injinko is not producing electricity, not gas. This flare also has the capability to allow us, we've got to add one more step, but by adding this flare, we will eventually have the capability to not only run the flare, we can run the flare at the same time that Injinko is also running and producing electricity.
So, under this timeline, it's going to be late October before we can see any real results from these new wells?
I would venture to guess it would probably be later than that. It takes time. I mean, when, when they are putting in, you're talking about adding thousands of feet of pipe into that landfill, and it's going to take a significant amount of time for that to get hooked up. And then, once it's hooked up, they've got to get all the pressures right in the wells to make sure they're all working right. My guess is you're looking probably January before any of us could sit here and say that we've seen a noticeable difference.
You answered one of my questions about the flare and Injinko, and so we'll have the ability to be running both?
We don't have that right now. We've got another step or two that we have to take care of, but at some point, we will have that.
My question was going to be, is Injinko up to, up to speed? And are we, are they capable of handling the increase in gas?
Well, if they can't handle the increase, we have a flare that can.
When you, when you go down in the landfill, when I first took a tour of it, that's the first thing I noticed, those big black pipes, and they're all coming out of the trash, and then there's the one that goes up the side of the rock wall. Will there be a second one going up the rock wall, or will they all kind of tie into that one?
That design is, I should have that design tomorrow, and we'll be able to see what that design's going to look like.
So, on the, talking about the benzene, explain to, explain, I know we talked about it this morning, explain to us how the airstrippers will work to address the benzene?
Based on what engineers have advised, the way to get rid of benzene from water is to basically aerate the water. And an airstripper is basically an aeration system that causes that benzene to disassociate itself from the water molecules, and it evaporates out of the water. We will have to collect that benzene. It, you know, it's not going to be able to just be spewed into the atmosphere. We'll have to collect that and through charcoal carbon filters and then dispose of those filters.
And on the, on the odor mitigation, number two, so that was installed, is it operational currently?
Not yet. Probably will not be operational until this weekend.
Okay. And so, correct me if I'm wrong, if I remember correctly, the way that Draper Aiden explained it to us, it's not a perfume, it's not a big Febreeze, it's a, it's something that sprays some type of mist, and it attaches to the particles that are producing the smell and pulls them back down? Is that?
That's the way it's been explained to me, yes.
Okay, so, so there's no additional chemical going out into the air or new fragrance to cover the smell?
According to Draper Aiden, the solution that is used that we missed with, a person could drink and would suffer no ill effects.
Okay. I'd be, could you get us, provide to us, or I don't know if you can provide to the public also, what's in that?
I think, I think we have posted that on our website, if I'm not mistaken. It's under Bayer Scientific. If not, I do know it's on the Facebook group.
Okay.
So, when you do the odor mitigation, that's just a pilot?
That's a pilot, right. We're going to do that for a month or, a month to six weeks, just to determine if that actually improves the situation.
I had a lot more questions, but these gentlemen up here answered, asked them, and you answered them. The one, both a question and a comment, is I know the video of this is available towards the end of the week, been about a week for people to see, but can you make those slides available?
Yes, we'll post those on the website.
Because I'm sure there's people that would like to see that information.
Sure.
And just for informational purposes, so on October the 12th, who will be here to talk to us about potential roadblocks to closure?
That'll be Draper Aiden and SCS.
Draper Aiden and SCS both, okay.
Yes.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the way I understand it. And I think it's important that everyone in the public understands this too, because we're talking about the closure of the landfill, and we're also talking about the smell, the work that's going on right now. They're essentially two big different things. They are tied together, but they're two separate. And the way Ernie explained it last time was, we're in triage mode, where if we go and close the landfill now, right now, today, there's still a smell. It still has to be fixed. We have to fix the smell first. While closure is important, we're talking about it, the smell is happening right now in these gas wells, the cover, the pumps, that's the flare, that is for the smell right now.
That's correct.
I think I have one more question. So, number six, talking about closure of the southeast chimney, that's where we think the smell is coming from, basically, correct?
Well, I don't, I mean, yes, it could be coming from there, it could be coming from the face, the working face of the landfill. There's several different possibilities, but what we do know is you can see that chimney, especially in the summer, you can't really see it as well, but in the, as it gets cooler, like right now, you can go there early in the morning and see this chimney.
I've been down there when it's cold, and you can see it. So, what, you don't know when that timeline would be to close it, but how long, once you begin closing it, would it take to close it? And can you, can you speak to what process the closure of the chimney would be?
Well, really, you've just got to block it off.
Yeah.
And there's several different options of blocking it off, whether that's clay that we pack in on top of that chimney, whether we use some sort of concrete mixture to seal off the chimney. That's yet to be determined right now as to how we would close that. Based on conversations I have with engineers and with DEQ, and even TDEC, once the gas wells go in, and once you get that fresh, the negative pressure to pull the gas, the theory is, is that that chimney would go away itself, simply because you are now not allowing the gas to escape, you're pulling it back in and collecting it through the landfill gas collection system.
But you would still want, you'd still want for, to be thorough, you'd want to close it in case at some point a gas well goes down, you don't have something else coming up?
Right.
Out the chimney in the future.
Right.
One thing I was thinking about, you went through kind of all the things that Jerry Peradins talked about, except for cover. Is that step already been taken care of, or is that still, I mean, where's that?
Right now, we probably have acre and a half to two acres that is uncovered, that's the actual working face of the landfill. But a person can go out there, and I think there was even a picture of it in the newspaper a week or so ago, you can see that the vast majority of the landfill has been covered with clay at this point.
Well, I appreciate the update. I just wanted to say thank you for the information. You know, as us, as the funding body, we vote on our budget every year for money for the school systems, for police, for fire. We've recently voted to spend, you know, over a million dollars for work that's needed in the landfill. And that's a, that's a tough spot to be in, to spend taxpayer dollars, because it's not our money. We, it's our job to use it wisely. That's how we got elected to be up here. But, but I'll say again, the two issues, the closure is, is one thing, and I'm open to talking about it, but the smell is, again, triage mode. The immediate concern, if that can be fixed, if there's anything we can do as far as funding, and I mentioned last time, you know, can they put the wells in faster, whether it's, you know, more guys up there working, is it overtime? You know, I know they're working on Saturdays too, so, I mean, I'll say it again, I'm, I'm open to try to do anything we can to fix the smell as fast as possible.
I'm going to hold you to that when I bring back some more appropriations here shortly, because it's not going to be cheap.
Yep.
Okay, the benzene is, is a whole nother subject, but the odor is a gas issue, correct?
Yes.
We need to work really close with the gas company, what's their name?
Injinko.
Injinko, I don't know why I can't never remember that. But if Injinko cannot handle the volume of gas that these new wells are generating, we need to run that flare 24/7.
And we actually did a test of that back in, I think, the last week of August, I believe, over the Labor Day weekend as well. If you remember there, maybe the third week of August, electricity went out at the landfill on two separate occasions, I think on a Tuesday and a Thursday night. And what I noticed those nights when we were running the flare, it appeared that there were not as many complaints about the odor coming from the landfill. So, I believe it was that following Monday, maybe Tuesday, I advised staff to no longer divert gas to Injinko to burn that flare 24/7, and let's just see if that has a positive impact on what the residents are suffering through. On Friday night of that week, I was out and about, going through Taylor Street, Georgia Street, Florida Street, on the Tennessee side, Bueller Road on the Virginia side, Shake... Florida Street, on the Tennessee side, Buhr Road, on the Virginia side, Shakesville Road. And it was around 10 o'clock and actually, my wife and I were driving around. I called Ms. Spradlin at 10 o'clock, happy as I could be, because we did not smell the odors anywhere we went. Unfortunately, that happiness kind of evaporated on Saturday evening when the smells came back. So, what I was hoping was going to be a fix to the issue that the citizens are, that live in that area were facing, quickly evaporated, no pun intended, and it, the flare did not produce the results that I, I hoped it would. Now, that doesn't mean that if, running that flare 24/7 in the future, once we get the gas wells all connected into the landfill gas collection system, once that chimney dissipates, maybe running that flare is the option for the city moving forward and run it 24/7. And maybe it's, the option is to run it in conjunction with Injinko. What I do know is Injinko, they have the ability, based on the amount of gas we're producing right now, we produce about 400 CFM of gas at the moment, 350 to 400. Injinko does have the ability, is my understanding, to handle that collection or that amount of gas. The anticipation, based on that size of that landfill and the amount of waste of that landfill, that landfill should be producing 1,250 CFM of gas moving forward. And if that's the case, then what that tells me is, we've had roughly 800 CFM of gas escaping that landfill for a period of time. And if we can produce 1,250, then in theory, the citizens that are behind me would no longer have to come over here and complain to us, which is a hope I have. They would not have to wake up at 2:00 in the morning because they can't sleep, they wouldn't be nauseated, they wouldn't have sore throats, they wouldn't have nosebleeds, and hopefully that goes away.
Okay, now my question is, if Injinko can handle 400, this new flare with this eight-inch pipe, can it handle the additional 800 if Injinko cannot step up to the plate and use more of the gas?
Yes. It can handle, I believe, up to 1,600.
Okay. And the hours of operation of Injinko is?
Right now, what we have agreed to with Injinko, they produce electricity during their peak hours, which kind of change as the seasons change. But right now in the evening, usually around 8:00 or 9:00 PM, I believe, is when we make that switch over to the flare.
Do you feel like?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, you can finish.
So the flare is running roughly from 9:00 PM till 7, 8:00 AM?
Yeah, somewhere in that range.
And it can burn 1,600 CFMs?
Yes.
So when these new wells come online, we should be able to get rid of gas at a pretty rapid rate?
Yes.
And we will know by mid-January?
Assuming we have no issues in regards to hooking up the gas wells, no supply chain issues, my hope is we know sooner than that. You know, I, I do not want to give anybody sitting behind me false hope that this will be completed in mid-November and then I'm sitting here mid-December telling you we've still got another month. You know, my hope is, is that we could get this completed in mid-November. I'm not going to sit here and promise that, because there's just too many variables in today's supply chain as to whether or not we'll be able to have everything on site as needed.
Do you feel we have enough staff at the landfill? Is it covered? Or would that make a difference to add any additional staff?
Well, the good thing is, on August 10th, council voted to add four additional staff.
Right.
The problem we're having right now is the same problem that every employer is having and that's finding people willing to work. So we've been advertising for these staff members now since August the 11th or so and we have not had any candidates apply for those positions. Staff would make a difference and I think if we can get four people hired, that would help us tremendously moving forward.
Haven't had any good candidates or just haven't had any candidates at all?
No candidates. And that's even going through our, I think they've even reached out to our staffing agency, but I'd have to double check on that as well.
And just to be clear, those four positions are our city positions for day-to-day operations. The other work going on now, like the gas wells and the cover, or maybe just the gas wells, is essentially an outside company that we've hired?
That's correct. APTM is the outside company. They have two or three staff members here. They're running the drill rig and they are the ones that dictate how quickly, actually, they don't dictate it. The landfill actually dictates how quickly these gas wells go in. Once they get down to a certain level, the compaction of the landfill is such that it goes a lot slower drilling those wells. And what we are finding is we get down to the 90 to 115-foot range, it may take three hours or maybe four to go 10 feet, which is, you know, that's significant.
Do the staff we're looking for, do they need any type of special qualifications?
No. We can train them for whatever, we can train them for whatever we need them to train for. Ideally, what I would like to have is people that have heavy equipment experience, but in the event we do not have people apply that have heavy equipment experience, we can move people around in the current landfill staff to work the heavy equipment until those individuals get trained.
You know the pay range for it?
Not off the top of my head, I do not.
26, 8, 12 to 47, 8, 10. So I think that would be, you know, that would be, I know it's hard to find people to work right now. I understand that and I know we have problems with that in multiple departments, I get that. But I mean, I think we need to hammer that home, you know, that, you know, it's a good job to work for the city. It's going to be beneficial to our citizens and you'll be doing, basically you'll be doing a public service to be doing this type of job and you'll be getting a paycheck, so.
If we could keep the comments down the back, it makes it a little harder for us to hear up front here, sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, but just basically, you know, I think it's a public service if we can get someone into that position. You know, you'll be making some good money, working for a good employer and you'll be doing a public service for our citizens.
Well, I, I do think people need to consider that when they're applying for jobs nowadays. I mean, you're working for a local government, you have good health insurance, there's a good benefits package, you have access to a retirement, the Virginia Retirement System, and that's a defined benefit, which most companies nowadays do not offer a defined benefit program. It's usually just a 401K. So, if you work here 25 years and you retire at the age of 66 or 67, you can see exactly what your retirement check will be at, when you retire.
Yep. And at a bare minimum, even if you can find just someone who's willing to work, even if they don't have the heavy equipment, you know, they could be dealing with just, you know, moving dirt, basically, for cover.
Yeah, as I said, I mean, there's, we can always train those individuals if those people will apply.
Okay, well, thank you for the update.
Thank you all.
The next item is matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. And for non-agenda items, we had two people sign up. The first person is Mr. Simple. Am I saying that right? Mr.? And for those who maybe are, are new here, don't know, the procedure is, everyone in the public gets an opportunity to speak for three minutes. When you come to the podium, the green light will come on for your time when it starts. When the yellow light comes on, I believe that'll tell you, your time's about to wrap up. And then when the red light comes on, your time is up. So, we appreciate you all being courteous of your time and everyone else's time. Thank you.
Good evening. You have a physical and mental crisis on your hands and it is affecting hundreds of households and thousands in this community on a daily basis. We've complained, pleaded, filed reports, spent our time and money to raise awareness and concern. Yet you care so little about the residents of both communities that this topic wasn't even on today's city council's agenda and you continue to accept waste and operate the landfill. You're trying your hardest to make this a profit center at the cost of our quality of life and that to us is a slap in the face. You blame previous councils, yet you continue to operate the landfill, except trash from Kingsport, Lord knows who other, what other states, and put forward the minimal effort to rectify the situation. Quit adding fuel to the fire. How can we trust the people that created this problem? How can we trust the engineers and consultants that have been floundering? You violated our right to breathe clean, fresh air. We are only able to enjoy these rights between 10:00 AM and 8:00 PM. That's not even half a day. And this has downstream effects. When you're mentally anguished, sleepless, and have newly found health conditions, you have trouble functioning, you have trouble thinking, parenting, maintaining relationships, studying, working, and driving. You are doing this to your constituents. Have each of you talked or walked door to door with the people in the affected neighborhoods? Because we have. Do you know in those affected areas, there have been multiple reports of glioblastoma and lymphoma? One of the lymphoma cases is my sister-in-law. There are scores of children with sudden nosebleeds. Do you know there's a 12-year-old girl that recently had surgery on her sinuses, a stone's throw away from the dump? Next door to that girl is a man with kidney cancer and lymphoma. Do you know there are hundreds of people in this community with nausea, headaches, burning eyes, and metallic tastes in their mouths? How can you sleep at night knowing that this is happening under your direction? What you have been doing is on par with the lack of morality and conscience displayed by the leaders that we have seen in places such as Syria and Iraq. They've gassed their own civilians hundreds, thousands of times. You have gassed us daily. This is your responsibility, this is your legacy. The ill effects are just beginning and will continue for generations. Initiate a transparent plan of action to get rid of the dump. Stop taking trash and vote to close it today. Otherwise, this city's embarrassing legacy will keep unfolding for generations.
The next person to sign up is Mr. Kellogg.
I've never done this before and I'm not, that's not something I relish or look forward to. Eight years ago today, I pulled my U-Haul into Bristol, into Bristol, Tennessee. Best place I ever lived. I've lived all over this great country. This is my home. I have, I have, you know, I have summer fairy plots here. This is where I'm going to, this is where I'm going to be forever. Okay? That was fine up until this last year. Now, the last three nights, and my brain is still foggy from the assault that I've had for the last three nights here, and it's not just those three, it's this last year. And as, as my fellow resident alluded to, you know, we're, we're poisoning people here and it needs to stop. What we need to do and what this council needs to do for the benefit of our citizens is to stop all intake at this dump. This is a problem that's clearly out of the control of this council and this city to manage. Now, we need to bring in people that can work 24/7 to get this under control before another load gets dumped in that landfill. I have talked to residents that have to sleep with wet towels over their head. They have to get in their car and leave their homes at night. I have kids waiting to get on the bus with their coats and their shirts up over their noses because it stinks. And then when they get to school, they don't even have a rest pit because at Fairwood Elementary down the street, it stinks inside all day. This lack of urgency and lack of inaction and lack of appropriating funds to make this problem go away is ludicrous. These are the people here who put you there. Now you, in good faith, need to stand up to the commitment that you made and solve this problem now. And I got nothing left. I guess I don't need three minutes. This is absolutely unacceptable. It's a horror show. This is not my Bristol and not my home. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Osborne, a second from Mr. Hartley. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naif?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
Item one of our regular agenda, public hearing for the CDBG Program Year 2020 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. I hereby open the hearing. Staff comment.
Thank you and good evening. The City of Bristol is an annual recipient of federal funding through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The entitlement monies may be spent to develop or sustain viable urban communities by providing decent housing and suitable living environments and by expanding economic opportunities, principally benefiting low to moderate income persons. All entitlement monies received are dispersed through the city's CDBG program. The Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, which is better known as the CAPR for the city's CDBG program, is an annual assessment of the city's performance and meeting its priorities and objectives of its five-year consolidated plan and its annual action plan. This report is being brought before the city council for public comment prior to its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So I wanted to take just a few moments, we don't usually do this, but I thought it might be timely to do, I have a brief presentation to summarize the CAPR and the CDBG activities that we performed this past year. So we received $270,267 in CDBG entitlement grant funds. We received this for the year ending June 30th of 2021. $222,0860 were spent. Nine public service agencies were provided $40,545 to carry out activities benefiting LMI population. And I put a little definition up there for you. LMI is low to moderate income, which is basically 80% of median family income. And this leveraged more than 1.2 million to fully operate these programs. Additionally, the public service agencies also leveraged a total of 2,676.75 volunteer hours, which is valued at $76,394. So I just wanted to go over a few of the annual accomplishments that we made with our CDBG funds. Five homes were rehabbed and I will say this is a little low. We typically average about eight, but with COVID, it kind of slowed things down a little bit. Three blighted properties were demolished. A handicap accessible ramp was completed connecting an underutilized parking area on Good Street to State Street. 301 uninsured individuals received medical care and prescriptions. 63 individuals received literacy and job skills. 135 neglected and/or abused children were provided advocacy and assistance. Childcare and case management services were provided to 956 school-aged children. 12 chronically homeless men received housing and case management. And 27% of the award funded a portion of admin and code enforcement staff salaries. It basically funds half of the code enforcement salary and about three-quarters of the community development specialist salary. So, in a nutshell, 1,623 LMI families were provided direct services. 98.47% of these monies spent benefited LMI population. The threshold for these monies is 70%. Okay, and here's a few, these are the three houses that were demolished on Lewis Street. It's the first one, second one, third one. And here is just a few pictures I'm going to show you of some of the rehab that we did. Older set of windows up at the top. This house received new windows, new storm door on the front door, new French doors. They also received a heating and air system. Okay, this property is on Island Road. Okay. This property is on Island Road. They also got new heating and air and a new roof. As you can see on the pictures on the left, they desperately were in need of a new roof there. And this is another one. This is on Massachusetts. They, of course, were desperately in need of a new roof, which they got through the program. And this is a house on Poplar Street, which needed a new roof. You can see in the before picture on the left, the completed roof on the right. And they also had some electrical issues that we helped them with. And here's a house on Beaver Street. They received new windows and a new roof. And here's on Cardinal Lane. This is a mobile home park, but this individual, he's, he has major health issues, and we were able to help him get a ramp to help him get to his car. Okay. And this is sort of my pride and joy. This has been like a three-year project, and I want to thank Wallace McCullough and Michael Main for helping with this. This is where we put an ADA accessible handicap ramp. It went from Good Street to a parking lot that was hardly ever used. It was in bad shape, and connected it to State Street down below. It runs next to the Sessions Hotel. And this was completed this year. Another thing I wanted to mention is we received COVID CDBG CV funding. This was for COVID relief, and we received a total of $275,016. We have spent $84,163 to date, although we have allocated all of it, and it's just waiting to be spent. So $57,624 went to public service agencies, serving LMI in the city. Most of that was PPE, special cleaning services, that type of thing to counteract the pandemic. $2,947 went to house quarantine homeless with COVID-19. $17,176 has gone to pay for delinquent utility bills and to provide food vouchers for those households financially affected by COVID. There is still money allocated to this program, and it's still going on right now. There's also been money allocated to help people with mortgage and rent relief. This is through Bristol Redevelopment and Housing Authority. So that, that program, that is just getting started right now. And then the remainder is in admin. It's not very much. It's, I think we could use up to 10% for admin. So another thing I wanted to mention, too, is since we're a member of the Home Consortium, we've had a little bit of activity using Bristol, Virginia gets a certain amount of funds for that. So right now, we're building a new house for disabled senior on Norfolk Drive. It's a brand-new house, and it's costing $135,000. And also, we recently awarded $152,957 in home funds to People Inc. to acquire a lot on Massachusetts Avenue and build a single-family dwelling for an LMI family. And I want to end with, here's a picture of the new house under construction for a wonderful gentleman. And as you can see, they're doing a nice job. The house on the left was his original house, which basically, when we do this, it means it's structurally unsound. And there's just, you don't want to pour, you know, good money into bad. So, so he is getting his new house, and he's, he's very happy with it. Questions or comments?
Hearing none. I just want to say thank you for the information.
Well, I thought it was timely. I think, you know, we wanted to show how we use our CDBG funds, so.
I know you mentioned the COVID funds. Is that included in the financial reporting and stuff, or is part of the CAPR?
It is part of the CAPR. It's part of it. We had to do a specific form that shows how much funds, what was available and how much we used. So it is, is part of the CAPR.
Impressive use of funds.
I just wanted to say thank you, Mrs. Salton, for the excellent report, and it's great to see these positive things happen, happening in the city.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Nobody signed up for public comment for this item, so I hereby close the hearing. The next item on the agenda is the second reading of an ordinance to vacate all of a certain public right-of-way in the City of Bristol, Ordinance 21 hyphen 4. Staff report?
Oh, council, this is the second reading of ordinance to vacate a certain public right-of-way. We had the first reading, the public hearing of this ordinance, on August 10th of 2021. This is a right-of-way out at Fellowship Chapel Church, and it would, the church owns the adjoining properties to the east and west of this segment of Carter Street. The request has followed the procedure to vacate a right-of-way. The petition was filed, and the public hearing was advertised on July 27th and August 3rd. And the request has been circulated to other departments and the BBU, attached for copies of the petition and the declaration of understanding, and a drawing showing the location and the request and a copy of the ordinance for the second reading.
Okay. Thank you. Nobody signed up for public comment for this item. Looking for a motion and a second for the reading of the, second reading of the ordinance.
I move for a second reading of the ordinance.
Second.
By caption only. Can you amend that?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Can I move, can I amend my motion to move for second reading of the ordinance by caption only?
Yes.
And a second from?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any council discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnham?
Yes. Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance 21 hyphen 4, ordinance to vacate a portion of an open improved public right-of-way.
Now, we're looking for a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance.
Move for adoption of the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any council discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnham?
Yes. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
Move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Abstain.
Farnham?
Yes. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.